Welcome, everyone, to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, June 3. And we are starting 35 minutes late today due to an extended Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, so I apologize for anyone out there listening and to you folks from the Planning Board. I certainly appreciate your time and willingness to be here, and I apologize for keeping you waiting. So we'll move right into our call to order and any declarations of conflicts. Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Bobby, seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Wonderful, that's unanimous. Can I have an adoption of the minutes from the May 22 meeting? Moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Dave. Okay, all those in favor? Great. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we can move right on to our reports. And our first report is a variance application of 35 Alice Avenue. And I'll turn that over to David Gundrum, our Manager of Development Planning.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Chair members of the Planning Board. The following application is a request for a major variance at 3 and number 3 and number 5 Alice Avenue, PID number 1110683. This is a request to permit a reduced rear yard setback of 2.79 meters in the R2S zone for an existing semi-detached dwelling, whereas 7.5 meters is otherwise required. The existing lot contains a semi-detached dwelling, which is pending final occupancy at the current time. Subject property is surrounded by other properties, which are also in the R2S zone, containing a mix of single and semi-detached dwellings. The major variance for rear yard setback is required to facilitate the future subdivision of the existing lot along the party wall of the semi-detached dwelling. The proposed lot subdivision would result in the creation of one new corner lot and one new interior lot from the existing corner lot that exists today. The proposed subdivision would result in a shift in position of the existing rear property boundary from the current. The image on the screen is a survey plan to show the existing property highlighted in red and the new boundary shown in black, which would be partitioned along the party wall shown here. In terms of legislative requirements, in accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on May the 13th, 2025, notice of the Planning Board meeting was circulated to 50 surrounding property owners within 100 meters of the subject property to request written comments on the proposed variance. No feedback in response to the mailed circulation was received. Just an overview of our planning evaluation. Some positive points is that the variance would enable subdivision of an existing semi-detached dwelling that would enable more attainable housing options on a floor purchase basis. Evaluation of the variance has found that the reduced rear yard setback will not cause negative impacts from the current situation. Shortcoming is, again, the proposal does not meet the regulations outlined in the Zoning and Development Bylaw for the R2S zone. And to, just to summarize our recommendation, Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 3-5 Alice Avenue, PID number 1110683, be approved to allow for an existing semi-detached dwelling to project into the following setback, following a proposed future subdivision of the lot be approved, and that is the rear yard setback by a distance of 4.71 meters or 15.45 feet. So as a summary of the application, our evaluation and recommendation, I'll turn it back to the Chair and members of the Board for any further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, David. Any questions from the Planning Board? Pretty straightforward, but look for questions? Yes? Okay. So moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Lee McDonald to support staff's recommendation for the major variance for the property at 35 Alice Avenue. So the questions on the floor, does anyone have any questions on the resolution? If not, all those in favor? And anyone opposed? Okay, great. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We can move on to our second report of the evening. And again, that report will be our Manager of Development Planning, David Gundrum, and it is a request for a major variance at 139 Kensington Road and the unaddressed parcel PID 278234 and 278226. Over to you, David.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chair members of the Planning Board. The following request is a request for major variance for properties identified as PID numbers 278226 and 278234. Request is to permit an increased maximum building height of 18.3 meters and an increased density of 100 square meters per apartment unit in the R3 zone, whereas a maximum height of 15 meters and a maximum building density of 140 square meters per apartment unit are otherwise permitted. Subject property is shown here at the southwest corner of Falconwood Drive and Kensington Road, across from the Belvedere Golf Course. The existing lot to the south, PID 278234, contains a single detached dwelling, while the lot to the north, PID number 278226, is currently vacant and undeveloped. And before you is a zoning map of the surrounding area. And I'll just note for Planning Board's information, this map is slightly out of data. The subject properties were recently rezoned, approved for rezoning by Council on May 13, 2025, and placed in the R3 zone, but that's still pending second reading and ministerial approval at the current time. Following is a site plan of the intended apartment development that would be enabled by the proposed major variances. And it's noted that access for this apartment building would share with the abutting site to the west, which contains an existing three-story apartment building. What's proposed is a five-story, 41-unit apartment building on the subject properties. Next few slides illustrate building renderings, just to illustrate scale, massing, and proposed design of the buildings. Our legislative requirements, in accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on May 20, 2025, notice of the Planning Board meeting was circulated to 33 surrounding property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject property to request written comments on the proposed variance. I'll just make a correction that we did receive one letter of opposition, which was received this afternoon after the agenda package had gone out, so just a correction from the slide there, which was forwarded to members of the Board earlier today. In terms of our evaluation of the major variance request, positives include that the major variance would facilitate compact urban form and infill development of higher density to meet future housing needs. The proposed higher-density development would be located adjacent to and abutting a site containing an existing higher-density apartment use. A neutral comment is that the proposed development would require application for building development permit, as well as for lot consolidation subdivision, and of course, the major variance, which is under consideration this evening with respect to maximum building height and also maximum density in the R3 zone. Shortcomings include that the proposed apartment building has potential to increase traffic counts in the area. However, being located on a corner lot bounded by local and collector roads also allows for the splitting of traffic impacts. It's noted that Public Works has expressed no concern with respect to traffic and the proposed access given available data, existing access and physical location of the site. So to conclude, our recommendation to the Planning Board, Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following major variance for the subject properties identified as PID numbers 278226 and 278234 be allowed, be approved to allow for a proposed five-story, 41-unit apartment building having both surface level and underground parking. Number one, permit a maximum building height of 18.3 meters, 60.04 feet, whereas a maximum building height of 15 meters, 49.2 feet, is otherwise permitted for apartment dwellings in the R3 zone. And number two, to permit a minimum lot area of 100 square meters per apartment unit, whereas a minimum lot area of 140 square meters per unit is otherwise required on a corner lot in the R3 zone. So that is a summary of the application, our evaluation, and recommendation, and I'll turn it back to the Chair for any discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. Just a question. So we have not yet gone through second reading for the zoning change. What would happen if Council didn't approve second reading? And we've already kind of jumped the queue and we're here now with the major variance. What would happen in that situation?
Through the Chair, I'll just note Council did vote in favor on first reading to approve, so it would be very unusual or atypical for them not to complete second reading to affirm that. Second reading does afford them opportunity for some sober second thought on that, but hypothetically, if they reject the zoning, then you have a variance, which is essentially, if the variance is approved, you have a variance, which is kind of, it's inoperable, essentially, if that were to occur, so, yeah.
I didn't mean to open Pandora's Box. I was just more curious around process and procedure when it came to that. But again, thank you for the report. Does anyone have any questions on this application?
I'd like to say that I thought that was a really good question. Well, I appreciate that. We might not jump the gun, but we might, because we've done different things sometimes where you wouldn't know that it happened. So I would suggest that we quickly defer this till we get a second reading and bring it back, because I just think it's backwards.
So Counselor McCabe has, I assume, then a request to defer this? So do I have somebody that would, oh, before I keep on yammering, I'll move it back over to, our manager has something he'd like to say.
Yeah, through the Chair, I don't mean to, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to note that the recommendation on the variance would go to the same council meeting date where second reading is scheduled for, so they would have both of them together at the same time to look at together. Yeah, yeah, just for clarification, yeah.
Okay, so ignore that. Julie no longer has a deferral on the table, on the floor. So moving back to the report at hand, do we have somebody that would like to move staff's recommendation? Bob, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask, the letter we received this afternoon, the letter of opposition, can you see on the ortho photo where that's located, that property owner?
Yeah, through the Chair, Bobby, I'll just go back to the air photo.
Just out of curiosity.
So, and I looked this up ahead. He was on Donwood Drive. He was located right here. 278598, that's 22 Donwood. That's the resident who provided the letter. So as you see, they're not directly touching a budding, but, you know, they expressed, as the letter was shared, there was a number of concerns, including privacy impacts from the height. So their backyard is here, maybe in line of sight of where the building would be, but they're not directly abutting or touching the future development, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Bob. So does somebody want to move, okay, moved by Lee McDonald that we accept staff's recommendation? Do I have a second, or?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Beck. So the resolution is on the floor to accept staff's recommendation. Do I have any questions on the resolution?
I do.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
I want to go back to page 22 in the report, and it's on the feedback from environment sustainability. And in there, they referenced a couple of heritage oak trees that were marked with a green X on the attached image. But when I go to the attached image, I didn't see a green X. But when you look at the renderings that were done on page 32, you see a couple of trees that are left in there. Are those where the trees are staying? Is that where they're talking about, Dave, or is that just an, or is that just an image that was thrown in there for this purpose?
Go ahead, David. That's a great question. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, through the Chair, Counselor Beck. What's on the architectural rendering on the screen? Those are just, I don't believe those are exact positions of existing trees. ENS, they would have identified protection for city-owned trees
Yeah.
under the bylaw. And that can be worked out through future building permit and/or if we do a development agreement in this case, we can have protections for what they want to see, so.
Okay. And they also mentioned about the, because we've had discussions about getting tree canopy in place around developments and ensuring that that is going to be happening. So the other one below, the other point below of one tree per 10 meters of lot frontage, those will all be adhered to. So we will preserve the heritage trees and will also ensure that the other planting will take place, too.
Through the Chair, Counselor Beck, that's correct. The site plan essentially illustrates the one tree per every 10 meter that ENS would want under the bylaw.
Right.
And in the event that there is a heritage tree that can't be saved, there is monetary compensation that could be provided to the city and also, and/or a combination of replantings at the cost of the developer. And it's up to ENS to work out what those ratios are, like want two or three or four trees per tree taken down.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, all those in favor of moving this on to Council? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, so we'll move that on to Council with the Board supporting staff's recommendation to support the variance. Thank you very much for that. All right, moving on to our third, third report, and that is a rezoning for an unaddressed parcel, Violet Circle and Evelyn Street. And I'll turn that over to Sonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, members of the Board. This is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the subject properties identified as lots 16, 17, 28, and 29 on Evelyn Street and Violet Circle, PID number 778308, from low-density residential single R2A zone to medium-density residential R3 zone, and change the official land use designation from low-density to medium-density residential to allow the development for four stacked townhouses on each of the four separate lots. Subject properties are four adjacent abuting lots registered under single PID bounded on the north side by Violet Circle and to the south by Evelyn Street, located within the low-density residential single R2S zone within an approved Greenfield subdivision site currently under active development. And the subject properties are currently vacant, containing no buildings or structures. This is the concept plan and concept building rendering. The subject properties are vacant lots that from part of what is a Greenfield or new subdivision development that is currently still under construction and expansion at the present time on the basis of prior approvals. All properties within the existing plan of subdivision in this area are currently zoned R2S, which allows for residential dwellings in the form of single detached, semi-detached, and duplex dwellings, but does not have any allowance for stacked townhouse dwellings as proposed. The subject properties are located in relatively close proximity to Norwood Road to the west and contains primarily single detached dwellings that have been established for some time. The subject properties are located approximately 700 meters north of the Arterial Highway by first via connection from Norwood Road. Parking spaces for each of the stacked townhouse units are proposed to be located to the front of the respective units facing the street frontage. The proposed structures would meet all the setbacks, lot area, and lot frontage requirement for the R3 zone based on the concept plans provided. As per Section 3.10.3 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, before rezoning any parcel of land, Council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and applicant. Council may, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed rezoning without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. But if an application goes to public meeting, then Council shall determine the deposition of the application, and the applicant may not be allowed to withdraw the application after the public meeting. Planning staff are of the opinion that the project has merit with sufficient information provided to date by the applicant to allow for consideration of the proposed rezoning and official plan amendment via the public meeting process with the Council. Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend that City Council approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning and official plan amendment request to rezon the subject properties identified as lots 16, 17, 28, and 29 on Evelyn Street and Violet Circle, PID number 778308, from the low-density residential single zone to medium-density residential R3 zone, and also change the land use designation in the City of Charlotte Town official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential to facilitate the development of each of the four lots with four-unit building, stacked townhouse dwelling. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sonia, for your presentation. So this is to proceed to public consultation based on staff's recommendation. Does anyone have any questions on the staff recommendation to proceed to public consultation? I know we'll have, again, if we do support that, we'll have many opportunities after we get public input on other various questions as well, but I'll still open the floor to anyone with a question. Okay. Sure, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, sorry. If you send a letter out to within 100 meters of these lots, how many people are going to fall within that? Like, is there going to be some or any?
There wouldn't, there wouldn't be very many, just given the parameter of the property. But unfortunately, or fortunately, that is the, that's what's outlined in our zoning and development bylaw right now.
No, I understand, but I guess.
Sure. Do you have approximate number, Sonia? Like, what was, do you know? Okay.
Approximately five. Most of them are vacant, so.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Dave. Good question. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Isn't this in vicinity of the same area on Evelyn Street there, when you look at PIDs 8193, 8201, 8219? Did we not recently rezone those into, each of those is now allowed to have a four unit? This area is still undeveloped. They're largely undeveloped, so those three properties, if I remember correctly, were recently zoned to allow like a four-unit building on each of those lots, I believe. Correct? Is that same street?
Yep, that's correct.
And does that end at, I can't remember, did we do, is, so they're all 78308, 8308? And does that end at, I can't remember, did we do, is, so they're all 78308, 8308? Is, so you got those four in red that are E308, then you got the other two beside it that are also E308. Are they?
And one in front of it, too.
Well, two in front of it. Oh, actually, yeah. So is that whole area one big, it's all R2? Sorry, I'm trying to understand the, because we're going to have, we've approved the other three lots with the four units on them. Then we have a vacant lot, 8308, and then we have the four, which are being proposed for the four stacked townhouses on each of those lots.
Yes.
It's still vacant, that 8308 between 8219 and the other 8308 in red?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
More questions will come up later, I'm just trying to.
Of course, yep. So does somebody want to move that we move this on to council with staff's recommendation to move to public consultation? Moved by Lee McDonald, seconded by Bob Kenny. So any question on the resolution? If not, all those in favor of moving this on to council for, for public consultation? Great. And any opposed? All right, great, thank you for that. That was a unanimous vote. So we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Report number, report number four, and that is 33 Moro Drive. And this is a request to rezone the subject property located at 33 Moro Drive from low-density to medium-density. And Michael is here to give us the report. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm presenting a request for rezoning and an OPA amendment on 33 Moro Ave, uh, Drive, sorry. Request was intended to facilitate a development of stacked townhouse proposal of five units on the site currently developed as a single-detached dwelling via an official plan amendment rezoning. The site is a corner residential lot located in the northwest corner of an intersection of Moro Drive and North River Road, located in the low-density residential R2 zone adjacent to established residential uses. Subject property contains a single-story, single-detached development, attached garage, and has been present on the site for many years. The site is surrounded predominantly by low-density residential unit, uh, uses in the R1S, R1L, R2, and R2S zones, and much of the development around the site is consistent with what is currently established there, established development, low-density development. In accordance with Section 3.10.4 of the zoning and development bylaw, on September 6, 2024, a mail notice was sent to 49 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property advising them of the proposed rezoning application. Twelve responses to the city circulation letter were received, all in opposition to the proposed development. The development was discussed at the September 18, 2024, public meeting. Meeting minutes are included in, within the report under attachment H. Comments received in response to the circulation letter at the September 18 public meeting primarily focused on a few areas. Traffic and road infrastructure, concerns stemming from site access from the addition of multiple wide driveway openings being added so near North River Road were mentioned. Concerns that multiple large driveway openings would reduce street parking and reduce the effectiveness of snow clearing were also mentioned. Neighborhood infrastructure was discussed. Concerns that the increased water and sewer surfacing needed for multifamily development would add to issues with the capacity of existing infrastructure. Concerns regarding the impact of this development overwhelming existing stormwater infrastructure were mentioned, and it was noted that local flooding events have occurred recently, and a lift station is nearing capacity. It was noted that sidewalks have been, have not been added to Moro Drive. Regarding the form and the zoning, the appropriateness of zoning, concerns that a stacked townhouse development would be out of character with the surrounding development were also, were also mentioned, which is primarily single detached dwellings. In terms of plan alignment, the proposed zoning and plan development is out of line with some areas of Charlottetown's official plan. Section 3.2 states that our goal is to maintain the distinct character of Charlottetown's neighborhoods and that development is harmonious with its surroundings. R3 and R3T have not been applied to similar streets, with the local area only having these zones on major roads such as Belvidere Avenue. 3.2 goes on to say that our policy shall be to ensure the footprint, height, and massing of new development in existing neighborhoods are physically related to its surroundings. A review of citywide mapping shows few similar examples of intensification exist within contextually similar areas or lots. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council to proceed to deny a request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map of the City of Charlottetown's official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and a request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the City of Charlottetown's zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 to medium-density residential R3T zone for the property located at 33 Moro Drive, PID 366997. And that's the end of my, my presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for that, Michael. If you all recall, this was a while back. Was it February?
It was last year. Sorry. It was last year. It was September, I believe.
September, it was that long ago. Okay, so it's just circling back now. I believe the developer had put it on hold for a little bit until it came back. Go ahead.
I can provide some context. So we, after we had a quite negative public meeting, there were lots of issues that we explored with the developer directly at that time. The development also has a couple of issues that would have to occur after the rezoning that we discussed specifically around the density of stacked townhouse units. The size of the lot is very close to allowable, but it would require variance after, which was something we were discussing with the applicant right after. We also offered the developer the ability to rescind their application so that a report would not be written towards bias of the site, and that was entertained for a period of time. But we've come back now with the applicant pursuing it being denied. This is the request to have it move forward to council. I'm not sure necessarily the context around that, but that is the choice of the applicant when also being offered having the application revoked, or withdrawn.
So if I was to hear you correctly, the applicant explored some options, but again, has circled back to their original application that they want to proceed to complete the process with staff denying the, denying the application, however, in hopes that he's going to see where things fall out in terms of planning board and council. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. And my understanding is that there's also a backup development that would meet current bylaw. I'm not sure if that's been fully designed or not. The last discussion with them was that there's another development that they may pursue.
In the same area, you mean? Or not, not relevant to this application?
Not, not in terms of this application.
Okay.
It would be totally separate.
Okay.
And that this not having pursued and gone through its process is, in some ways, limiting that other development was the last discussion I had had with.
And so if, if, if the planning board and council support staff's recommendation, then there'd be no revisiting of this particular parcel for one year?
And that has been explored with the applicant as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report. I'll just open it up now to the board. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Just to clarify, there would be no revisitation of this concept, but if they wanted to come back with an alternative concept to be explored, that would be, could be potentially entertained within the one-year's time.
Through the chair, yes. Essentially, because this has a stacked townhouse use, my read, and I believe the read that we have is department of the one-year clause, would be that it would have to be that use or, I'm not sure how like a townhouse development might come through, but in terms of something that currently meets zoning, that would not be impeded at all by the denial of this application.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Counselor Beck? No. Okay, so does somebody want to move, so you're accepting staff's recommendation? So Counselor Beck has moved that we accept staff's recommendation, seconded by Paul Conley. So the resolution is on the floor. Are there any questions on that? If not, all those in favor of accepting staff's recommendation and moving this on to council? Anybody not in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So this will move on to council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, so we have our final report on our agenda, and that is for a lot consolidation. Laurel Palmer is here, our Planner 3, to present the report, and I will turn it over to you, Laurel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of planning board. This is the request to consolidate a portion of PID numbers 1100528 and 193284 in the Montgomery Heights subdivision with PID number 663823 being the LM Montgomery Elementary School. Sorry, I missed, should have flicked through that one. So, property details, the property is currently zoned MUR, medium-density mixed-use residential R2S, low-density residential single R2, low-density residential and institutional, and it's a combination of vacant undeveloped land and the existing LM Montgomery School, property totaling approximately 35.08 acres. And if you'll remember, this was before the board last month for a rezoning request, so even though these zones are currently existing, they will be changing to reflect the, the school development should the final reading go through council. This is the whole property. This includes the three PIDs. This is the existing school property. So the purpose of the request, the government of Prince of Bird Island has requested to consolidate the property to allow for construction of a new elementary school on the site, and the applicant is proposing to construct a new public road which will connect Terra Heights to Emily Drive and further subdivide the property along the south and west boundaries for low-density and medium-density housing. The proposed road will provide a connection from Emily Drive to McWilliams Road to the east, and this proposed road is here, will come up to Emily Drive, and it also connects to Terra Heights. So the bylaw permits staff to approve law consolidations in the R1 and R2 zones. However, as per Section 48.3.4A of the zoning and development bylaw, any law consolidations that are requested in zones other than the single-detached residential R1L zone and the low-density residential R2 zone shall be subject to council approval. You've seen a number of those come through in the recent past. We, we do, you haven't seen any of the single-detached dwellings, but we, whenever we have the commercial properties come through, we do have to take them to council, and I know you've seen them. So this is our concept plan, which was submitted on May 5 for the school development, and there were some amendments to that when we went through the rezoning request, and you can see that right down here to the south where some of the housing was converted from higher density or medium-density to lower density. So the official plan also, I include it within the report, sections in the official plan that support educational facilities and growing educational facilities within communities, and that's included within the report. So in conclusion, this is substantially a well-sized parcel. It's 24 acres. The school is constructed, it will provide additional capacity to accommodate the educational needs of children within the neighborhood now and well into the future. In addition, the site will provide additional open space and recreational facilities within East Royalty for its residents. And it is the opinion of planning staff that this proposal meets many of the technical requirements for the creation of a complete neighborhood. Staff are also of the opinion that the request has merit and meets many of the policies and objectives of the official plan, East Royalty master plan. I just want to note that the 24 acres, as I indicated, is the, the portions that are going to be consolidated with the existing school, so that's this part, and then the overall parcel is the 34. So planning staff's recommendation is, planning is encouraging planning board, or planning staff are encouraging planning board to recommend to council to, for the consolidation of vacant lands, being a portion of PID number 193284 and a portion of PID number 110528 with 69 McWilliams Road, LM Montgomery School, PID number 663823 to be approved subject to a final PIN survey plan. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Laurel. So this is just for a basic lot consolidation because we've already done the rezoning the last time and went through the process of the public consultation, et cetera.
Exactly. So, so now, once, once these lands receive final reading, the 24 acres, we'll, we'll hold off on the approval of the final survey plan until the rezoning is finalized, and then, once the rezoning is finalized, we will stamp and approve the plan to consolidate everything into one parcel. When that happens, that will allow them to further subdivide the property, because they will be parceling it off for these lots along the new road, and they will also be signing roads and services agreement with our department to construct that road.
So this is that same situation that we still have second reading? So second reading will happen first, and then this, and it's that same discussion we had earlier?
It's similar, but the reason why we're holding off on this is because the sale of the land will go through once the final reading happens with the rezoning. So right now, the government has the option on the land, and they're in the process of purchasing it. Once the rezoning is complete, then they will be able to finalize their sale.
Great, thank you. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. I'm just, and I'm glad to see the maps that proposed right away and the road, and we've had meetings in the past and with current homeowners. So if you recall, we had a public meeting, I don't know how many years ago, where that public works manager had indicated to property owners at that time that indeed that road would not go there because it didn't line up with the cross. Now, we had a new manager in who had a different perspective of what needed to happen. I'm wondering if residents are going to have a chance to hear this, or is this just going to be a straight ahead? They were at a public meeting where they were told that this road wouldn't come in this same area, so I'm just wondering what happens in that case.
Through the chair, I'm not sure which road you're referring to that wouldn't happen because this is shown on the East Royalty. This is actually in plan.
Yep, and we saw that, and they had concerns because it was really, if you recall, do you recall that, Council Deputy Mayor, where we were at the meeting? And it was indicated because of the roads not connecting, that it wouldn't go there. There was an actual, it was said out loud that that roadway wouldn't come because it wasn't, but like it wasn't lined up with the street across McWilliams Road, whatever that, was it Ann Drive or one of those?
This road would not be permitted?
Is that the one besides?
This is not.
The Berth's property?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Is there another road going in, then?
Down, maybe this one? Norman Drive is terminated in a cul-de-sac.
Yes, no, no, it was going to be a connection.
But this was always planned, and, and never, to my knowledge, was that ever?
No, it was said at a public meeting that it wouldn't happen because it wasn't direct. And I, and I understand the reasoning, because I've been advocating and trying to understand it. I'm wondering if residents are going to get a chance to hear about it, or does that just go in?
No, this is already been to a public meeting, and this, there is no road here to align with this.
So it must be another place down further than, is it? That another road's going in? That's fine, I can figure that out.
I think you're talking about Norman Drive. Norman Drive was, at one time, was supposed to extend, but it's not. But this is the only road here I would see that would have been offset from this one, but that's quite a distance, that's, wouldn't create a.
No, that's not what I was looking at. Okay, I'll, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Any other questions? So staff is recommending that we recommend to council that the consolidation of the vacant lands be, be approved. So do I have somebody to move that? Moved by Lee McDonald, seconded by Bob Kenny. So the resolution is on the floor to support. So the resolution is on the floor to support staff's recommendation. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous. We'll move that on to council with our staff and board recommendation. Thank you very much for that. Okay, so the final item on the agenda is any new business, introduction of new business. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Wonderful. Have a great evening, and again, my apologies for starting late. Bye.